Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Tonight, we're going to be discussing research and recommendations regarding a series of impact fees for the city of Emeryville. We're looking at five impact fees tonight. Transportation impact fee update, general government impact fee, parks and recreation impact fee, and two affordable housing impact fees, one for residential and one for commercial projects. And these fees have been -- the work behind these fees have been developed pursuant to the City Council direction that was given to staff in December 2012. So just as a review, impact fees are valuable because they could be a funding source to the city for public facilities, capital improvements, and affordable housing. Development pays its pro-rata share of costs incurred by the city as a result of the development project as a one-time fee, so it's only when the project is first developed. The fund can be established that can be used to finance improvements over time, but the fees cannot be used to fund existing deficits, only improvements meeting the demand for services generated by growth. So there's a two-step process in initiating the fee. One is preparing and accepting an initial study that sets the maximum amount of the fee that could be charged, and then the second step is that the City Council would set the actual fee, which would not exceed that maximum, and that level of fee would be based on policy and market considerations. So to prepare fees, mitigation fee act studies need to be developed, and those drafts of those studies are attached to the staff report, and I'm going to be describing the methodology used in each of the studies in the first part of the presentation. So these studies are to -- have to include these findings. They have to describe the purpose for which the fee will be used. They have to demonstrate a reasonable relationship between the fees' use and the type of development project on which the fees are imposed, and also a reasonable relationship between the need for the public improvements or the services funded by the fee and the type of new development. And to document the maximum amount of fee has to reflect the proportional cost of the public improvement attributable to the new development on which the fee is imposed. So at this study session, we're going to present the findings from the mitigation act impact fee studies, and then the second part will be to obtain direction from you on the method of setting the actual fees that will be charged to new development. So we have -- whoops. We've retained consultants to help us with the fees, and just now it's not doing what I want it to do. Second, three consultants. Farr and Pierce has updated the city's transportation impact fee study. Kaiser Marston has prepared the residential nexus study and non-residential jobs housing nexus study, and Wildin Financial Services has prepared the draft general government facilities impact fee study and parks and recreation facilities impact fee study. So I'm going to go through the methodology of each of these studies, and then if you have specific questions about the methodology, the consultants can come up and speak to that directly. Before starting, I wanted to review these development prototypes with you. They're used to estimate what the proposed fees would be on a sample development and to compare the proposed fees to other cities. They don't necessarily reflect actual developments in the city. They're just used as a way -- as a method to compare fees to one another, really. But just to give you a sense, for instance, we're looking at 100-unit multifamily rental projects, 100-unit owner-occupied projects, and 100-unit townhomes as the residential prototypes with different square footage sizes. Most of the multifamily residential projects you're seeing built in Emeryville now are bigger than this. I know there are over 150 to 200 units. Again, with the square foot -- the 100,000-square-foot office project, the office -- the large offices in Emeryville are quite significantly bigger than 100,000 square feet, 200,000 to 300,000 square feet on the peninsula. We've looked at 150,000-square-foot research and development project. That would basically is a point of reference. The Emeryville Greenway Building, which is built now, is around 90,000 square feet, so that gives you that sense of scale. And we looked at a 25,000-square-foot retail restaurant project mix, just assuming 20,000 square feet of retail and a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, just to get a sense of what the fees would be on that type of development. And lastly, a 200-room hotel. So starting with the transportation impact fee, it was first adopted in September 1990 and updated in 1998. 2009 general plan calls for a multimodal transportation system that includes public transit, pedestrian bicycles, as well as automobiles, so the fee would be used to pay for transportation improvements in all of these modes. So the first step in the study is to identify the projects, and we've identified 28 projects which total about $101 million. These projects are in the general plan, sustainable transportation plan, pedestrian and bicycle plan, and other planning studies. Next is to identify -- to separate out the existing deficiencies so that the costs included are only those that can be attributable to new development. This is very sensitive. Oh, gosh. And, all right. So since the study is an update of the 1998 traffic mitigation fee study, the baseline for identifying existing deficiencies in transportation is 1998. So existing conditions identified as deficient in 1998 are not included in the project costs. Assuming that, the net project cost that's included in the study is $88 million. This is a list of the projects that are included in the study. It's a little hard to read, but it is in your -- in the study. So if you want to drill down into that later, we can, but here it is. I'll just move on, and we can come back to that if you want to talk specifically about some projects. So the next step is to identify anticipated new Emery development and trip generation. The new Emeryville development is identified in the general plan forecast, which are shown here, and then the trips that are generated from that forecast at peak hour, 7,030 trips, consisting of those vehicle transit and bicycle and walking trips. Then you calculate the maximum fee per trip. That's dividing the $88 million total cost by the total peak hour trips, which comes out to $12,541 per trip. You next multiply the fee per trip by the auto trips generated by each use at peak hour, and that's based on Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is a schedule showing you how that works for all of these different uses. You see the ITEP on peak hour rate. There's a calculation on the percent of primary trips and the maximum fee then for each use. Okay. Moving on to general government facilities. The methodology here is to calculate the per capita costs of existing facilities is the first step. So that's dividing the estimated costs of existing facilities in the city today by the current service population, and that population includes both residents and employees, and employees are weighted at .31 of a resident since they're not assumed to use these facilities as intensively. Then to define the fee for specific land use types, that per capita cost is multiplied by the occupancy or employment density rates for various types of development. So here's a chart that shows how that's done. The total estimated cost of government facilities, $63.5 million. See below it, the existing service population totaling 16,500. There's the facility standard per capita, and then again, the maximum justified fee based on those occupancy and density assumptions, and those assumptions are from the general Next, moving on to the park and recreation facilities methodology. It's similar to the general government. Calculate an existing facility standard. Here, it's total park acres divided by the service population. The service population includes both residents and employees. Employees are weighted here at 50%. Then you calculate the per capita cost of new park and recreation facilities, and lastly, define the fee by applying that per capita cost to employment density rates for the various types of new development. And this schedule shows you how that is done in the study. There's the existing service population at the top of 20,400, the existing acres of parkland to calculate an existing facility standard of 1.37 acres per thousand. The cost per acre of approximately 6 million. That's assuming land and improvements. And then the cost per 1,000 service population, it's 8.3 millions. That's 1.37 times the cost per acre, and you get the cost per capita of 34100, and again, multiply that cost by the different occupancy and employment densities to get the maximum fee. So next is the affordable housing nexus study. This study was conducted for rental housing only because our affordable housing set-aside ordinance still applies to ownership projects. The residential nexus study looks at the demand for affordable housing created from workers in occupations that serve new residents, such as restaurant, healthcare, and education. And the other study, the non-residential nexus study, looks at the demand for affordable housing generated directly by new job growth. So first, the methodology for the residential nexus study is as is shown here. You calculate the gross income of the people who are living in 100-unit prototype, assuming 30% of income is spent on rental housing costs, and the average rent in that is based on a market assumption. Then you calculate the number of jobs created by household consumption. That income calculated above is input into an economic model called IMPLAN to estimate the number of jobs, and those jobs that are converted to new households based on U.S. Census factor. The new households are then divided into very low, low, and moderate income households based on occupation distribution, compensation levels, information from California Employment Development Department. And then, next is to identify the affordability gap per unit. So that's the total development cost of an affordable unit less the value of the unit with affordability restrictions at each level. So then you have a gap for very low, low, and moderate income households. And you multiply the affordability gap per unit by those households by the number of worker households in each income group, and that gives you the maximum fee. So here are the results of that analysis. For 100-unit prototype, 850-square-foot average unit size. The number of new worker households you can see in each of the income categories totals 22 for moderate and below. Then the affordability gap per unit is shown here. Gives you the total nexus cost for 100 units, and that's divided by 100 to get the total nexus cost per unit, which is the maximum fee. All right. Next is the non-residential jobs housing nexus study, and here we start with the total number of jobs created in the project, and that applies employment density assumptions in the general plan for various land uses. That is then converted to jobs -- convert the jobs to workers' households based on a census factor. Those households are then distributed for very low, low, and moderate income using the same assumptions as the residential nexus study I just described. And lastly, the maximum impact fee is calculated by multiplying this factor by the affordability gap for each level. And here, this chart shows how that works. You can see the square footage for office, research, and development, the retail mix and hotel prototypes, the employment density, the jobs created, and coming down to the number of households in each, and the new worker households in the project that are fall into each of those income levels, very low, low, and moderate. There you have -- next is the affordability gap for each of those income groups, and you multiply the worker households by the affordability gap divided by the square footage in the project, and that gives you the nexus cost per square foot. So the total at the bottom for office, research, and development across the bottom row is the total maximum fee that could be charged to those uses. So this is a summary of the maximum fees supported by the impact reports. I totaled transportation, parks, and recreation, and affordable housing together, and then put general government under the line, the total, because we aren't going to be recommending moving forward with general government, which I will explain on the next slide, but this ends the description of the impact fee report. So I think it's a good time now. If you had questions about any specific report, we could ask the consultants to come up and respond.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have some questions about the transportation impact fee report, and one has to do with the methodology used. And based on our -- well, first of all, I want to say this represents a huge shift from past reports because it's acknowledging other modes of transportation and not just increasing car capacity, so thank you for responding to our general plan. However, you're still basing impacts on peak hour, which is automobile use, and kind of neglecting impacts on other modes at other times, and so why not base impacts on all the different multimodal types of impact? So for example, we have a lot of -- I don't mean to pick on a particular company, but mid-size trucks that make deliveries, and there's a big ship -- delivery business that operates in town that certain times of the day you see those trucks lining up and leaving town, and certain times of the day coming back, and delivery trucks block lanes, travel lanes of traffic, and bike lanes, and a variety of other things. And so there's two things here is it seems to me kind of flawed to just look at peak hour and not just like at all the impacts across all the modes. And then, secondly, during our very lengthy process to come in with the new general plan, we talked about, and Charlie talked a lot about, looking not just at level of service but at quality of service, and I don't see that reflected in this methodology.
Okay. Great questions, and some of those don't necessarily relate to the transportation impact fee. I do apologize. I'm Catherine Tellez. I work with Farr and Pierce. We've been working with the city for a number of years, preparing the updated report. To address the peak hour question, we debated whether or not we wanted to use a daily rate versus a peak hour rate, and we ultimately decided to go forward with a peak hour rate because this was an update of the prior plan, so we wanted to have some consistency with that. But you do raise some good points about sort of midday trips and how that might affect things. And then in response to the question about quality of service, after we finish with this task, one of our future tasks is to actually prepare an update to the city's transportation impact study guidelines so that one future development's come forward, we have a better understanding of how we'll actually evaluate those projects for all the different modes.
Well, I would just say that this isn't just an update from 1998. This is a new report, and we have new -- we have a brand-new project list. I'm going to get to that later on, and I think there's some things that are holdovers from the old project list that shouldn't be on this list moving forward, and there are some additions, but I do feel like those are policy-level decisions that the current council should weigh in on in terms of the project list. So I wouldn't really want to call this an update because this is really new, and you're looking at new variables, and it's just not a pattern of the same old.
So one thing to consider in the distinction between peak hour and full-day method is that the all-day method, they tend to put more of the burden on different types of land uses, where, for instance, retail, you'll see more use throughout the entire day, where at office or research and development is more of a peak hour.
Right.
So
And Saturdays are gridlocked here on certain streets in town, and I don't see that reflected, the weekend traffic.
Right.
Well, perhaps I can elaborate a little bit on this. The methodology, as Helen explained, looks, and this is kind of, I believe, the standard way to do traffic impact fee analysis. It looks at the future growth of the city as per the general plan until whatever it is, 2030, and then it looks at the general plan EIR at the trips that will be generated by that use. And that typically does not include deliveries. It doesn't include goods movements. It's primarily looking at people moving either to work or to shop or to school or whatever, and it does look at all the different modes. Helen mentioned it was something like 7,000 daily trip or peak hour trips, and that is all the different modes. So then you come up with a number based on that of the maximum fee that you can charge per trip, and again, it's looking at all the movements around town by all of the various modes, but it does not include goods movement. And that was not part of the analysis in the general plan EIR. And then the question is you have this -- now you have this big number, the dollars per trip. That's kind of the thing that you end up with after all this analysis. Then the question is, how do you divide that dollars per trip amount up among all of the various land uses? And you can either do it based on peak hour, or you can do it based on all day. And really, you can do it either way. It's kind of a policy question. We're going to collect ultimately the same amount of money for the program either way. It's just that if you do it by peak hour, certain land uses will pay more into that ultimate pot of money, and other land uses will pay less. So it's just how does it get distributed if you do it by peak hour versus all day? The reason we chose peak hour, there were several reasons. As Helen says, one reason is that this is considered an update of our 1998 plan, not a new plan, and that's important because if it's a new plan, then you cannot fund any existing deficiencies that exist today. But if it's the update of the 1998 plan, then you -- the cutoff is 1998 for existing deficiencies. So if there's a deficiency that exists today but it didn't exist in 1998, then you can still fund it as long as you're characterizing this as an update of the 98 plan. Otherwise, you're, you know, limiting what you can pay for. That's why we're considering an update. But the reason for the peak hour was it's an update of that plan. It's more consistent with the way other cities do it, so when we're comparing our fees to the fees of other cities, if we use daily rates and they're using peak hour rates, we're kind of comparing apples and oranges. And frankly, as Helen said, certain land uses will end up paying more if you do it as a daily rate, and that includes retail and restaurants and some of the uses whose rates are already pretty high. This makes them even higher. And if you then compare that to the rates other cities charge for those uses, it kind of puts us off the charts. So that -- those are some of the reasons why we decided to use peak hour instead of daily. And if I could address your level of service question?
Quality of service.
Well, okay. The way the previous study was done, the way the projects were selected for the 1998 study was purely based on level of service. We looked at different intersections, and we said, oh, this is going to be level of service F in the future, so we need to fix it, so let's put a traffic impact feast project on that intersection. Considering that this is by all modes and that the methodology for multimodal level of service is a little bit unrefined at this point, and it would be very complicated and difficult to prepare a multimodal level of service analysis with the idea of getting to a list of projects, Farr and Pierce suggested that we already have a list of projects, that the community has identified and supported through the Ped Bike Plan, the Sustainable Transportation Plan, the general plan, all these other planning efforts we've gone through. The community's already said what projects they want, so why go through some complicated multimodal level of service analysis to identify projects that we already know what they are? So we didn't use level of service at all, or multimodal level of service, or quality of service, or of whatever you want to call it. It's not even part of this study. You may recall, we had a study session about this. I think it was like a couple of years ago now, and at that point, we asked the council for direction, and that's the methodology you kind of directed us to use at that time. So that's what we did.
Does the rest of council have questions for Farr and Pierce since Catherine is up here?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Farr and Pierce, and Charlie somewhat answered it, but this particular study, it's a relatively standard methodology, right? There's no extreme differences in this study than other municipalities have brought forward.
That's correct.
It's a relatively standard, okay. In other studies, have any of these other studies been challenged in court for any reason?
None of the studies that Farr and Pierce has worked on in the Bay Area have been challenged.
That's the answer I want. Okay. Thank you. That's what I'm looking for.
Anyone else from Farr and Pierce? Other questions?
I'd very much like to hear from the people in the audience at this point in time because the numbers are up in front of us, folks, and if there's any comments on the part of the people here, I'd like to hear it.
Okay, let's hear from the public then.
Is this just about transportation or about all of the different studies for the public? We haven't talked about any other of the studies.
About the housing and the
I wonder if you want to hear the staff recommendation on what the fee should be before you hear from the public?
Yes, I think that would be helpful. Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So we're not quite there yet.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the time to talk about the methodology of the studies, or if you have any questions, any more questions?
Well, I do want to talk about the project list because there's some things on it that I don't want to see moving forward.
Can we talk about that now, though, or should we just stick to the methodology?
I'd like to hear the report.
Okay, finish the report.
Yeah, please. There's so many different kind of complexities within this, so it's good.
So now we're moving into what policy considerations for establishing the impact fees. Now that we have the maximum, what is the actual fee going to be? So first is looking at which fees to charge. Mentioned before, we're recommending not including the general government fee because there are not a large number of facilities planned for general government expansion. Next is balancing the city's needs for public improvements and affordable housing with the need to maintain a competitive position in the region to attract new development. Next is looking and recognizing market conditions when setting the fees, distributing the total impact fees so that sufficient funds will be generated by the different fees to construct the range of public improvements, affordable housing the city's looking for, and then maintaining equity by charging new development to cover some portion of the demand generated by the projects.
Can I ask you a real quick question on that slide, which is about the distributing the total impact fee? Distributing among whom or what?
Different impact fees.
Different impact fees, okay.
So from the kind of competitive position analysis, really looking at the total impact fee, because that's what a developer will look at, but from the city's position, how much of that's going to parks, how much is going to transportation, et cetera? All right. So first step is to compare Emeryville's existing fees to neighborhood cities. So looking at not only impact fees but permit fees and plan check inspection fees, so all of the fees that are paid upfront with the building permit. So here we can see the residential fee comparison, Emeryville compared to Berkeley, Oakland, and Walnut Creek. For the -- on the left is the multifamily rental, and then in the middle and on the right are the ownership, multifamily ownership condos, and then the townhouses way to the right. But you can see in the first case on multifamily rental that Emeryville's is quite low compared to Berkeley and Walnut Creek. Oakland has very minimal impact fees. Looking at the for-sale projects, these charts do not show the cost of in-loo programs such as our affordable housing set-aside program that would be applied to for-sale housing. So that's not going to show on that chart, but it is a cost that the owner, a developer of owner-occupied housing would have to pay. There's a similar fee to that in Berkeley as well. It just doesn't show up here. It just doesn't show up here. So here's the commercial fee comparison. You can see how, this is for office, research and development, the retail mix, how Emeryville is lower than competitive cities Berkeley, Oakland, and Walnut Creek. And then for the research and development, we've looked a little differently at Berkeley, Richmond, and Alameda, which tend to have more research and development space. And in all of these, there's room for Emeryville to adjust its fees and still remain competitive with other cities. Here's the hotel fee comparison, which is lower as well. So the other issue is residential real estate markets. The residential real estate market, I think as everyone knows, is quite hot right now. Rents are up 28% since 2010. There is a large amount of rental residential development occurring in Emeryville at this time, which is indicator of the strength of that market. Hotel also is doing really well. It's at a high occupancy, and the TOT is increasing. Office and research and development market are not as strong. They're still recovering from the recession. The fourth quarter of 2013, there was an office vacancy rate of a little over 15%, and the research and development had a 13% vacancy. So that leads us to what we're recommending. We're recommending that the transportation impact fee be set at 20% of the maximum, and that the parks and recreation impact fee be set at 25% of the maximum. This, again, accomplishes the policy objective of distributing those impact fees between transportation and parks and recreation fairly comparably. On the affordable housing, we're recommending a $20,000 per unit fee, which is about 56% of the maximum fee. So it's a higher level of the fee, and again, referencing the strength of that real estate market right now. We believe that those projects can absorb that fee. The affordable housing fee on commercial projects, we're proposing to be minimized at $2 per square foot. We acknowledge that those projects do create a demand for affordable housing, but we wanted to reserve the capacity in those projects to pay for transportation and parks, since the rental residential fee will be picking up, will be generating a lot of money through the $20,000 per unit, which you'll see later. So also, there's an affordable housing in-lu option that could be considered. The developers can be provided an option to provide affordable housing on-site, instead of paying the affordable housing impact fee. And an example of how that would work is that the affordability gap to provide a low-income unit for 850 square feet in 100-unit market rate project prototype, the affordability gap is $290,000 per unit. You'd collect $2 million in fees from that project, so you could pay for essentially 6.9 units with that, if it was going to be a low-income unit. So this is just hypothetical example, taking some assumptions. It just gives you an idea of the trade-off between the dollar amount and the units.
Can I ask you to remind me of how many affordable units were basically demanded by the creation? Again, I'm just not remembering what number it was. It was like four plus eight?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, thank you.
All right. So here are the recommended impact fees for each use: transportation, parks, and rec, affordable housing. Multifamily rentals totaled $25,297 per unit. Again, the multifamily ownership and townhomes is much lower, because there is not an affordable housing fee as a part of that. Office totals $9.54. Research and development, $7.30, and this is per square foot. And the retail restaurant mix is $65 per square foot, and the hotel is $2,119 per room. Not per square foot, that's per room.
Can I ask you a question on this, just since you're on that slide? For townhomes, it's zero for affordable housing?
Right, because we did not conduct a study for ownership, an ownership...
Let's assume those are ownership.
Right, because we already have the affordable housing set-aside ordinance in place there. So based on that recommendation, we wanted to evaluate what the financial impacts of that recommendation would be on development. And again, with the objective of balancing the city's need to fund future growth with the fee burden. So we looked at, compared it with other cities, and we looked at fees as a percent of project value. So here's the comparison with other cities. And this is all fees in the permit, plan review, existing impact, and the new impact, which is in purple for Emeryville. So you can see how with those new impact fees, and this is the commercial, we're still in the range of what other cities would require for the same uses. And here's the hotel. We're still a little below the average on the hotel.
Helen, before you move on, looking at these other cities, when were they, when did they look at their impact fees? How current are they?
Well, it's different. Berkeley just adjusted theirs. I have...
So this...
Walnut Creek recently adjusted theirs.
So they're...
Alameda's going to in the future. So they're all at different levels. San Francisco, we haven't talked about yet, but they do it annually.
Okay.
So which, you have the ability to...
So they're current, in other words, relatively current?
Right.
Okay.
So there's the hotel. And now moving on to the residential. So Berkeley is $20,000 per unit, which would increase to $28,000 after 2016. Walnut Creek is $12,750 per unit. And just to put it in perspective, we have not brought San Francisco in to look at comparing it with the other fees, but here, San Francisco is $51,000 per unit. So just across the bay, it's like over twice as much as what Emeryville's asking.
That's why people leave the city.
So here is the existing residential per unit fee comparison. It's hard to see.
I don't understand why Walnut Creek's considered a comfortable...
Well, they have the same type of product. They have a podium product built over structured parking in the downtown area of Walnut Creek. You see that developed there. All right. Here's the proposed fees as a percent of project value. What Wildin has told us is that a reasonable range is 5% to 15%, depending on the type of use and market conditions. And commercial developments typically more sensitive, so can support lower fees. And based on the strong market for rental residential development, fees can be sustained at the higher end of the range. So here is what Emeryville's existing fees are as a percent of value compared to the total fees as a percent of value. And you can see that for multifamily rental, we're up to, we're near to 10%, but for office, R&amp;D, retail, restaurant mix, we're still in, you know, basically 3% to 6% of value. Whereas before, Emeryville was quite at the lower end.
Can I ask you a quick question? When you're talking about the existing fees, that includes our current traffic impact fee?
That's correct.
Which would be increased, but it wouldn't be on top of the current, right? It would be changed to the new?
Right, this shows the marginal increase in the traffic impact fee.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So how much fee revenue could the city expect to receive from these fees? Over a five-year projection, there's a lot of development happening in Emeryville right now. Thirteen projects, over 2,000 rental units, 171 hotel units, almost 250,000 square feet of laboratory space. So based on that projection, we expect to see almost $5 million in the transportation fee, $9 million in parks and recreation, and $41 million in affordable housing. So you can see how much the residential generates for housing there.
Helen, is there any experience or knowledge of, once you, you know, that's a very healthy number there, but is there any kind of statistic that says, once you put in these impact fees, that developments drop out or are abandoned? Is there any figure like that?
Not that I know of, but perhaps a consultant can help us with answering that.
I'd like to hear from the consultants on that, if there's any kind of track record or history.
Okay, you want me to finish up?
Yes, yes.
So just to put these revenues in perspective, so $5 million in transportation essentially funds a little over 5% of the $88 million project cost that was in the study. The $9 million in parks funds one and a half acres of parkland. And Doyle-Hollis Park costs $3.5 million to develop, and that's not counting the land acquisition cost. So it's expensive, is the bottom line. And affordable housing, if you look at the average affordability gap over all of the, the different income categories, $190,000, $41.9 million essentially gets you 220 units. So that just puts it in perspective that these are expensive services and improvements, and the city is making inroads into meeting its needs, but it's only that, it's inroads. So that's the end of the report. Again, you can ask the consultant specific questions. What may the...
Kaiser Marston?
Kaiser Marston. Do you want to come up and talk about the market impacts?
Or a question about housing, yeah.
Since those are the highest fees we're recommending. Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Kate Funk, Kaiser Marston Associates. And if I heard the question, you are interested to know if other jurisdictions have proceeded with residential fees of this magnitude, and whether they have halted development or whether it's had an impact. And these fees are actually no more, and in many cases, less than the inclusionary programs that have been in place in some places for 30 or 40 years. As far as local cities that we've been comparing, we saw those astronomical fees in San Francisco. And if you're, San Francisco's got more housing in the pipeline and under construction than it has in decades. I mean, it certainly hasn't been any damper there. It's a very powerful market. To move away from that rather extreme case, I mean, Walnut Creek put in place its inclusionary and alternative fee program not quite 10 years ago, upped its fees two or three years ago. And again, they're experiencing a lot of activity in this cycle. Same is true with most cities that have adopted these programs. Our recommendation for the 20, in the range of the 20, was in consideration of our view of the market strength of Emeryville. We wouldn't recommend that for every jurisdiction, and it's very much a customized sort of application in our view on competitive environment, market strength, and what you're layering on top of. Location, location, location. Yes. Thank you.
Other questions?
Sure. Any other technical questions on the analysis or methodology?
No, thank you. What about from Will Dan on parks? Questions from council? Do we need to hear?
I was just curious about the cost of developing parks. It does seem like a very high cost, and I wonder if you could talk a little bit more about, you know, all the factors that contribute to that.
The cost assumptions in the park study were based on actual costs that, for, in Emeryville, for developing parks. We looked at Doyle-Hollis Park, and we looked at Pellidoo Park, which are the most current parks developed. So Emeryville is expensive. You know, it's a city very close into the urban core. Land values are very high here. That's why you're seeing the type of real estate development that's being developed here. It's very expensive land. So that's why you don't see a lot of townhomes. You see these higher-density apartments.
And partially because of abatement, too? You factored in abatement, abatement costs?
Yeah, residual tax.
It's not even factored in there, really.
It's not.
So that would even make the fee higher. So, I mean, given that we're only recommending 25% of the parks fee, the actual recommendation of the fee is so below what the maximum justified by the study is. If you adjust some of the assumptions that set your maximum fee, and they varies a little bit, you could do that, but our recommendation is way down below that.
And Helen, it is, there is an ability to take a look at these rates every year.
That's correct.
Annually, you can adjust them.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, you'd have to be very sensitive to what the market's doing and what's happening. But there is an ability, it's not set in concrete, an ability to change it annually.
That's right.
I have another question.
Just to add, one of the cost elements that's unique when you're trying to create a park in an urban environment is that oftentimes you're having to acquire and displace existing businesses. So you're looking at also costs of, you know, payment business, goodwill, relocation, and those sorts of costs that come along with acquiring the property as well.
Yeah. Jennifer?
I had one question about the commercial, the non-residential housing fee. The recommendation is to kind of put it all at $2 per square foot, but of the four different commercial types, there was a huge range, actually, in the maximum amounts, from, I think it was like $66 up to $245. And so putting them all at one level, which is, it looks to me, it ranges from below 1% to a high of 3% of the maximum level. Can you talk a little bit about why it would be so low, and it wouldn't be something, I mean, like $2 per square foot versus $5 per square foot? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's a big...
Overall, the recommendation was developed through an iterative process. We would look at, you know, a specific amount of fee, and then we'd see, well, how does that compare to other cities? What is the percent of value? So we're trying to keep the fee tighter in this range. So the higher we pulled up that affordable housing fee, the higher everything was off the charts. And because the rental residential, there's so much residential development, rental residential development in the city right now, putting that $20,000 per unit fee on that product just generates significant revenues. And it's not necessary to generate a lot of revenue for affordable housing from the other commercial uses. And the, what I call the capacity, the ability to increase the fee while still remaining competitive with the other cities, is devoted to transportation and parks. So it's really a question, well, if you put more in affordable housing, then you'd have to take some away from transportation and parks. And while we're trying to have a flat 20%, 25% across all of the different uses, there's a lot of different considerations to weigh. And just kind of this de minimis $2 per square foot kept a sense of equity in that, well, you know, obviously, especially hotel and retail, generate a lot of jobs for people who would be low-income people. So not charging them anything didn't seem fair. So that's how we came up with that.
But you didn't want to have a differential, then, among the different types of commercial development?
It didn't seem necessary. I mean, it's something, because it was so de minimis, it was just more of a symbolic fee that we wanted to make the point, that we understood there was a need generated.
I guess for me, there is that sense of burden on the certain commercial developments that actually generate the greater need for affordable housing. And, you know, I think the difference between R&amp;D and retail is significant for us, and we see that in our city, and who can afford to live in Emeryville and who can work in Emeryville.
But the bottom line is getting the revenues in to create the affordable housing supply.
Okay.
Other questions?
Can we hear from the public?
Yeah, let's hear from the public.
Oh, I have two other questions once we're gone to the public.
Okay.
I forgot to ask. Thanks.
Helen, that was very good. I'm Scott Donahue, 1420 45th Street. I'd like to remind the council of something that I think is worth remembering, considering that the lion's share of what we're talking about is affordable housing for these fees. That our artist co-op that I'm a part of, we have three parcels that we developed many years ago now. It remains a low-to-moderate-income housing complex, but it's a different kind of housing. It's limited equity housing. And limited equity housing means that the land value is never realized by the dwellers of the housing. The dwellers of the housing own shares of the nonprofit corporation. And it has been a very economical model. And it has been a very economical model for all of us living there, but also from a city point of view, the amount of money that the city invested to allow us to go forward and make it possible for us to borrow money from the banks, by today's standards, was microscopic. The city basically bought $400,000 of our land value on one of our buildings, and we've gone forward with our three parcels based on the strength of that city recommendation. Banks loaned us the rest of the money, and we were able to develop our other properties. And it's a, we developed as we went along over time, and individuals have made their studios as they could afford it. And it's just another model for you to consider, that I think we should consider this going forward, that maybe there's a way that the city can provide less expensive but better long-term, low-income housing for our future residents. And I don't see that discussion about this, and I think that should be considered as a potential model to also look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sorry. Good evening. My name is Felix Al Young. I'm the senior project manager from EH Housing. And I'd like to say that I appreciate very much the city's in-depth study for the nexus connections between developments of various kinds and its impact. I would like to say that we would support, of course, the various impact fees, because that would be, I think, given reflection of the market in Emeryville, the disproportionate amount of housing that's going up that is not affordable versus the amount that is, is pretty staggering over the last couple of years. That said, we also want to say that if there are any kind of credits or deferrals or waivers for impact fees for affordable housing, 100% affordable housing, particularly for extremely low-income or very low-income, that that could be structured in a way that would count as a contribution to the developments for tax credit purposes, and that could be done, you know, in a way that would be beneficial. And I, just by virtue of being here, I would also like to support the previous speaker's comments about other ways of doing affordable housing that target more of that between 80% to 120% type of median market. Artist cooperatives and cohousing, land trusts, that kind of development, and we also are very supportive of. Thank you.
Thank you. Other folks?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, Jeff Sears, Wareham Development. We certainly support fiscal prudence and sustainability. There probably is room for you to collect some more revenues to do the important things that'll keep the city healthy and attractive. We're behind that. We'd love to be able to get something for nothing, but that isn't how life works. I think in general, the business community is ready to invest in Emeryville to keep it high-quality, because the assets we locate here, we can't pick them up and move them, so we have a long-term interest in it. That being said, I'd like to make three key points. Really like you to remain mindful of the total burden that projects and certain businesses have here. So it's not just the development fees, it's taxes, business license, the Emery Go-Round fees, Measure A. You're considering a hotel tax increase. You're talking about transfer taxes. We support a lot of those, we're part of paying a lot of those, but you want to think about the entire package. And I haven't come to say how that should happen, but certainly you're looking at transportation fees tonight. The Emery Go-Round is a big and important part of transportation, how it works in the city, how it works well, and businesses are already paying for that. So when you're thinking about the total package, I think it's important to consider not just these development fees, which are sort of getting compared in silos to other development fees, but the whole package. Number two is the message. It's great to see what your peers are doing and compare, and there's definitely room to increase, but I would love to see that Emeryville could still say, we've increased our fees, but we're still a better deal than anywhere else, because that's been good for the city in the past. And I think that's sort of a marketing and sort of a policy statement that has mattered over time and helped the business community be interested in doing business here. Third, if the business community is going to up the ante in terms of what they help create in terms of revenue bucket, I think it's important that you show them that they get value for that. So the projects that are going to get funded by this new money, you want to pick them really prudently. I heard Ruth and others saying she wants to look at which projects are on the list. I think that's important, you know, to you. Maybe the methodology is sort of old-school because it's more defensible and so forth, and it lets you fund more things, but you want to make sure you're not funding old-school projects that don't refer to the future. And I think the business community can get behind if they think the dollars are really going to the quality of Emeryville and used wisely. Thank you.
Michelle?
I just stepped up after Jeff because I want to echo a couple of things that he was saying. I agree with a lot of what Jeff was saying. When I read the studies, I was, a couple of things came up to me. While it makes sense, based on the current market, to consider, you know, dramatically increasing the fees for affordable housing, it makes sense also to think about what the impact will be when and if the market changes. And I know that we can change year to year, but it also begs the question of thinking about what is the cost, even though it's not a development fee, what's the cost for the owner-occupied units and the townhomes that would be comparable? Will it drive development to more owner-occupied units? Will it drive, you know, away from rental? You know, you sort of have to look at the dollars to think about what the impacts of those fees will be. And then also, there are, when you guys redid all the zoning, there was some, you know, bonus structures put in place, and maybe as part of the fees, there are ways to offer offsets, you know, that you can reduce or eliminate fees, not only for affordable housing, but if you include a park that's open to the public that you maintain, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I also put together, for my own interests, just a spreadsheet comparing, like, actual fees, and the numbers are sort of interesting to look at total totals. And I think what Jeff was saying before about the other assessments, even though they're not fees, they are included in the bottom line and will have an impact on the kinds of decisions that people make, you know, whether to locate here and what kinds of developments to bring here. So, thanks.
Bye.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Asher, and council members. I'm Bob Cantor, president and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. We had a somewhat spirited discussion about this at our board of directors meeting just this afternoon. No official positions, however, a couple of comments. Number one, we do want to reference again, and actually, I would like to ask first as a question. I, as a layman in this area, perhaps some of the developers and consultants can answer, how the increase in fees of any kind translates into the increase of the cost of the final product, whether it makes the housing more expensive, your hotel rooms more expensive, whatever it is. I don't know. I think it does, and I often hear these fees are passed through because they have to be recounted. In terms of the comparability, we have said many times before, and you know you've heard me say this, it's okay to do comps, everybody does them, but I was looking at Helen's presentation where she had the various comps laid out and how we're lower. That would be a classic presentation to any business who wants to locate here and why you should come to Emeryville. What makes us different is why we should do what we do similarly to our neighbors, but we do differently. And speaking of comps, by the way, with all respect, San Francisco is not a comparable city. We should not, that shouldn't be on the table, even though, as Helen said, it's just across the bay, it's a world apart. San Francisco, besides being a larger city, is also a county. They have to fund all the county functions, the courts, the hospital, the welfare, the voter, that we don't have to touch in this city. It's a whole separate structure, it's just not comparable to ours at all. Finally, and Jeff made a good point, anytime we look at any fee or tax increase, and it's always legitimate to look at them, you have to please look at the whole picture. It's very easy to segment one out and break it down, but everybody has to pay the whole thing. We still have to pay the Measure A, we still have to pay the Emery Go-Round, you know, the parcel tax, everything. And this chamber, as you know, has not a knee-jerk reaction chamber. A number of years ago, you had to have the utility user tax, which generates a lot of money in this town and is paid for overwhelmingly by the commercial sector. It had to be authorized, it had to win the ballot, and this chamber supported it unanimously. We absolutely backed it publicly because we realized how important it was. And Pat O'Keefe sent us a personal note thanking us for that, and many others, including the Measure A tax, which we know goes to the schools, not to you, and the Emery Go-Round tax, which is operated by the private sector. So, and we do just want to keep in mind that we've been your partner, we do support fees, but you need to, let's not ruin, let's not foul our garden here, let's keep us competitive in a special place. So we urge you to think of that in those terms as you move forward. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else?
Mayor Asher, members of the council, I'm Joe Ernst with SRM Development. And I have a few, after reading the report, I have a few questions and observations that relate to our proposed project for the Sherwin-Williams site. And namely, you know, after the study sessions and several meetings we've gone through, you know, how do we balance, or how do you balance, achieve the balance to adequately promote many of the other objectives that you want to achieve at the projects? Namely, we've talked at length about retail, even in many of our conversations with you and with staff members. I think many question, for this particular project, how much retail can we support there? You know, what is the cost to develop it? What are the rents we can achieve? Adding, you know, $10, $15 more of rent just makes it that much more difficult to achieve these other objectives. The Tier 1 office, the existing building, 131, you know, already today, if you look at cost to rehab that to a level that I think you would find acceptable, current market rents are already 40% to 50% behind that. And that's current market rents for the best creative space in this market. So, you know, not only do we have rent, need to see rents move significantly to keep a building you want to keep, and we would like to keep, but layering on another $10 of fees makes that even more challenging. So how does this impact other things you want to achieve? The methodology, you know, again, leaves me scratching my head a bit because it becomes, it's described as the maximum that these projects can support, and that these fees then are a basis or a function of this maximum. But when you say $176 for office and $280 for retail, I mean, I don't know of any project that can support that, you know. And here in the East Bay, our costs to develop are the same as those in San Francisco, but our rents are less than half. So, you know, using that as a means to justify fees, it's a methodology that makes it harder to support buy-in and harder to understand the equity of some of the fees. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's, excuse me, my name's Mark Stephan. I'm president of City Center Realtile Partners, who are the owners of Public Market. And just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, Walnut Creek was also used as a comparison, and the housing fee that they have is about half of what's proposed, and their rents are not half of what Emeryville's are. Also, with regard to retail, their retail rents are double of what you're going to achieve in Emeryville. Also, as it relates to Public Market, and the question was asked, do these fees have impact on the developers? We have a situation at Public Market where, you know, we presented to you that we have this desire to move the project forward and create this gathering pace for the community, to realign Shell Mound, to build the parking, add retail, restaurants, and new opportunities. To do that, though, we have some major infrastructure costs. We have to move the road, we have to build a garage, we're going to expand the park and renovate the existing park, and there's some serious soil mitigation fees. When the project was first approved, it was envisioned that redevelopment agency funds would help to fund some of that. We all know that redevelopment agency funds no longer exist, and so our goal to make up part of that was to add residential units to our project. And with these fees, we're talking about sizable amounts of dollars, perhaps $14.5 million, that would be taken away and we would not be able to use to help offset some of these infrastructure costs that we need to incur in order to make the improvements. And if that happens, it seriously puts into jeopardy the quality of the product that we can deliver. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just arrived, so I didn't hear what's here. I'll see you when I do the video. But I was at a recent joint policy committee meeting at NTC, and the city of Milpitas decided they would have one fee, and then they would figure out how the money would be spent. But they have one fee, and that might be something that we may want to look at. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else this evening? Jennifer, you said you had a couple of questions?
I do, and now I have a few more, thanks to all of the good comments that we heard. So I was curious, actually, the folks at Kaiser Marston who talked about how imposing fees didn't seem to squash development in a number of cities, I was curious about the question posed by a couple of the speakers about passing on the costs and those fees into end-users, you know, whether it means rents go up, or how do you measure that? Have you seen evidence?
Kate Funk again, Kaiser Marston. Developers wish they could pass on the cost to the users, charge more rent, charge more sales price, if that's the case, but the market doesn't work that way. The market will, you can charge a rent that the market will bear. Ultimately, in our view, and the view of analysts who have been at this for many, many years, is what adjusts is the land cost. Doesn't happen right away. Land costs don't drop, they don't come down very slowly, but in increasing market, land costs will increase less rapidly if other obligations are paced on the cost of development that will take up some of the ability to cover a total increased cost. So it's hard to always accept that, you know, land costs are going to adjust because it doesn't happen right away, and it doesn't happen in a very clear, pronounced pattern, but ultimately, that's what happens.
You know, this reminds me of my economics class, where we talked about externalities and, you know, the cost of development. Certainly, we can see what's happened in the Bay Area with low-income folks not being able to find places to live and living farther and farther away from their jobs, et cetera. And so in a way, to me, this reminds me of trying to build in those costs and actually having the government collect some of those fees to try and provide the services that haven't been provided, perhaps, by the market. I don't know if that rings true. If that's just from my economic brain.
But there's definitely, as you point out, an environmental component to the whole thing, because without affordable housing nearby, people just have to drive greater and greater distances to housing they can afford.
Thank you. My next question actually is about the one-fee idea in Milpitas. I don't think we can do that because we have very designated pots of what this, the funds can be used for, but if the staff, if staff could respond to that. Do we know anything about it?
No.
It's our understanding that the mitigation fee studies have to be linked to the particular improvement that's being funded.
Okay.
And that the studies have to show, make all of the findings that I outlined in the presentation.
Okay.
Relationship between the fee and what you're funding and the use.
Right.
Generating the need for the fee.
Okay. And then, another question has to do with rental versus ownership, and I heard this from a few people. We have had developments in Emeryville that started out as rental and then got converted to condominium. I don't know if it's gone the other way, except maybe something was planned to be ownership, but then ended up being rented instead. How, when we have very different fees here, clearly we are incentivizing or looking at, you know, what kind of a mix we might like to see in Emeryville. There's a kind of a value judgment, I think, that's laden on who you're charging. Can you address what would happen with the change of use or a change of ownership?
Well, my understanding is that the fees are based on occupancy. They're based on the new, the demand that's generated by the residents or employees in the specific development. And so if you have an apartment building that's already built, it has a certain occupancy, you don't expect that occupancy to change. you don't expect that occupancy to change significantly just converted to ownership. So it's linked to occupancy. For instance, if you have a retail use that, okay, you pay impact fee when the retail use is built, but that occupancy changes to restaurant, which is, you know, going to have higher traffic fee, transportation fees, et cetera, the difference in the fee would be owed at that time the restaurant came in. So it's based on the occupancy of the use and the density assumption.
But if we're charging for rental and we're not charging for ownership?
I think there might be enough property building for rentals.
Oh, I see what you're saying, is that if there's no fee on the ownership at all.
Right.
So I don't think there's, you're asking, would a fee be charged at that time?
No, she's asking about the market. Like, will people then build ownership?
Well, that, and, I mean, we're not going to be refunding fees if someone's deciding to.
No, it wouldn't be refunded.
Okay.
Well, one thing to add to that is, if an existing rental project converts to condominium, first of all, that doesn't happen very often because there's condominium conversion requirements, including tenant assistance for the existing renters, and having them be, you know, have first, write a first refusal to buy the units and all that kind of thing. But also condominium units, unlike rental, are subject to, still subject to our affordable housing set-aside ordinance, which is why we have the fee on rental and not on condominium. So as soon as you convert to condominiums, then you're obligated to provide the affordable units in the project.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So if it's already built, a certain number of units would have to be designated.
Right.
Subsidized. Okay. And then, my final question is about retail vacancy. You mentioned other vacancy rates in town with both office and R&amp;D, and I was curious if there are retail vacancy rates in town.
There are, but I don't know what they are off the top of my head. What is happening in retail is it's not as bad as office and research and development. It's getting better. It's not real strong either. It's kind of in the middle. That's my sense.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Anyone else? Yeah, Ruth.
So if it's time now, I'd like to go back to the transportation project list.
Good idea.
When I, when I go and I look at the preliminary project descriptions and cost estimates, well, first of all, we should know here that the total, when you include admin costs, is $100 million, and so the impact fees we're going to gather are, you know, are not going to come anywhere close to funding everything on the preliminary list. However, if you don't put something on the list, then people won't think about it, and it's for council in subsequent years to basically pick off of the list about which things they want to spend money on as the money comes in. So, that being said, I take a look at the list, and there's one project that once again jumps off the page at me, which is the only project listed as kind of hanging on from the 1998 traffic impact fee, which is the I-80 Powell off-ramp. And we've already spent money on that off-ramp to improve the visibility for the Bay Trail users, because that's the crosswalk that is actually the Bay Trail. And I don't think we should spend any more money on a Caltrans off-ramp. We have other things that we can spend money on. And we have a great list that some include improvements based on specific projects, EIRs, and general plan ideas, and study sessions, and whatnot. But that project stands out to me as something that is not forward-moving, but it's just stuck in the past, and so I don't think we should keep that on anymore. And then the other, so that's project number 10. And then project number seven, while it's a nice thing, I'd rather prioritize something that's kind of missing altogether. Project seven is Shorebird Park Connections, and it's to improve an existing sidewalk to make it clear that it's a multi-use path at the end of the Bay Trail. And at this point, people who, people who use the Bay Trail in a variety of different capacities have managed, I haven't heard about any collisions or accidents or hazards by having a substandard, kind of awkward transition from a Class I bike path to a sidewalk. I just haven't heard of any problems there, so I'm not sure, while that's a nice thing, it's not a big-ticket item, but those few hundred thousand dollars could go towards something else. So those things, those two projects, I think, should certainly drop lower. And then the projects that are considered but not ultimately included, which is Table four, the one project that sticks out to me that I think future councils should take a look at is the Pickle Works Path, and, because that's consistent with trying to get a finer-grained, walkable city. And the Shorebird Park improvements could basically fund the Pickle Works Path. And so I just feel like, at the very minimum, those things should be, those changes should be made. But, you know, this project list is a policy, is a policy document that'll guide, so I really feel like we should spend some time on it.
Yeah, I agree with that as well.
Mayor, as I understand it, the continuation of this is that we're sending this out to the various committees, to the Planning Commission, to the...
Economic Development.
Yeah, the other committees. So let us include this comment when we send it to the committees to pay attention to this list, because you're quite right, it's a policy document, and changes should be made.
Okay.
May I note one thing about this?
Yes.
With regard to adding or taking away projects from the list, considering that our recommendation is only, I think, 20% of the maximum you could possibly charge, which would pay for all of these things, we're not going to be able to pay for all of these things.
I said that.
So, right.
I acknowledge that.
Right, I know. So if something is on the list and you ultimately decide not to build it, it, you know, it doesn't do any harm. But if it's not on the list, then you can't fund it with the traffic impact fee. So it might be prudent to add things to the list that you think are missing. That's more important than taking things off that you think are superfluous, because you can ultimately decide not to fund those anyway.
Yeah.
Just a clarification.
And in terms of the methodology, and maybe Ferr and Peers can help us with this, it feels like if you add more to the list, you're increasing the total amount of cost of projects, which would increase actually your maximum amount, which would, if we kept the same recommended amount, just mean we're funding a lower percentage of the maximum. But I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that adding things to the project list does change, shift that methodology a little bit, and it may not change the numbers in the end.
Well, and subtracting projects from the list will do the same thing.
That's right.
In reverse.
And I'm curious, if this, if the fees can be updated each year, can this project list be updated, or is it set for the life of the, of the project?
I thought about this, the off-ramp, for a long time. Mike said, has very clearly, it's on the list, it's on the list. Otherwise, you have to refund the developer fees.
I'm saying, can we add things to the list?
Yeah.
Oh.
I believe you can.
Okay, how do we move this along? We're going to send it back to the committees.
Because I would like to make sure things, things are on the list for the possibility, but it doesn't mean that everything will be funded or built. But it, it provides, yeah, future councils with the menu of what can be funded through these fees, and I think that's really important, and providing that flexibility. I don't see why we wouldn't.
And we have the opportunity to do that when it comes back to us, after it's been vetted by the committee.
Sure.
Can we move this forward now?
Does staff have everything they need from us on this? I, I just want to put out there that I think it might be worthwhile, as committees look at this, to consider, I appreciate staff's recommendations, I feel like they are measured, and there was a lot of thought that went into this, a lot of research. I'm still concerned a little bit about that $2 per square foot commercial amount, and whether $3 or $4, what that would do if, if we looked at adjusting from that, you know, 1.5% to a 2% kind of amount. I'm just, I'm curious, I know that staff said it's a very tricky balance, but I would like to explore that, and I'll ask for that when it comes back to council, so if the committees want to suggest that, I think that'd be helpful.
And I think it's important to keep in mind, Jennifer, that if we start out on this and we set something and it does not work well.
We can change it.
For the community, it's an annual change, so we're not locked in, but the real impetus should be to get this off and running.
Right. I agree. And I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm glad to see a light at the end of the tunnel in terms of funding affordable housing. When redevelopment went away, we were left, right now, with no state solutions to that, and so it's nice to see something coming forward. I had one other question, which was something actually that someone else mentioned, which is whether these affordable housing fees could be used in these alternative...
Limited equity.
Right, models for affordable housing, and whether these fees could, is that possible?
I think so. I mean, it's flexible.
Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work on this and all the reports.
Yep. Moving along.
All right.
Okay.
We're on to our, with that, that meeting is adjourned.